I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First order of business is public comment. One wishing to speak to the council. There are none. We'll now go into closed session, and we do have an addendum, and our city attorney will give us that information.
Mayor Cabralis, we do not need to go in. In fact, we need to continue item... Faded litigation pursuant to item number three on the government... 549569 subsection C. And an addendum item which is also... 54956.9C.
Okay? Go. 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 I will call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First order of business is a report from our city attorney on the closed session.
Mayor Cabralis, yes, we had two items to discuss. They were both pending, written, directed. Action with respect to either item.
Thank you. We'll have the invocation. That'll be given by Elder Alfred Wilson from the Destiny Christian Center. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance by our Victorville Police Chief, Cliff Reynolds.
Let us pray. Father, we do thank you right now for this day. We realize your word said, "This is the day that the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it." God, we pray your blessings. Even this meeting, God, we pray for the City Council. You ask that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. You give them insight for oversight as we make decisions for this great city of Victorville. We give you praise, and we thank you for blessing your people that are represented here today in Jesus' name.
At this time, we're going to have three presentations, and those will be conducted by our Mayor Pro Tem, Mike Rothschild.
First one is from our banner program that we're very proud of and our citizens that have served in the military and active duty. And tonight, we have Brandon Tafoya and his mother, Hazel. Would you please come up here? And anybody, matter of fact, anybody from the family, please come up. We're going to take a picture anyway, so it'd be nice to have you up here. And serving in Afghanistan. He's a graduate of the high school in 2007. And Hazel, you'll be accepting a certificate from the city. And the banner will be posted up until such time as he comes home. And if he goes back, we'll repost it.
On the behalf of the Tafoya family, we'd like to thank the City of Victorville for honoring our son. He's been a real blessing to us. He's been raised here in Victor Valley, kind of all grade levels here. And we're very blessed because it's not... He wasn't due home until November 13th, but we found out he'll be home by October 27th, so we're really blessed and honored to be seeing him on American soil once again. He's just a really great kid. Didn't expect him to join the military whatsoever. We've seen him very highly educated and headed to college. And he came home and said, "Mom, I'm going to the military." I'm like, "What?" He said, "Yeah. You've always said, you know, as we made right choices, you'd be behind us." So this was a real hard thing to accept for us as a family, but we're very honored that he is our son and he's serving in the U.S. Marines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Even though I'm Navy, I'm kind of partial to the Marines. My dad served as a medical corpsman in the Korean War with a Marine unit. One of my best friends died in Vietnam, and he's on the wall. And he was a Marine helicopter pilot, so even though I'm Navy, I'm still partial to that branch a bit. Next one is fire prevention week here. And if I could have the chief come up here, we've got a proclamation. I'll have him speak to a few things, but the thrust of this is that there's 3,000 people a year die unnecessarily because of home alarms and things that are not there, or the fact that we either let them expire, or we don't know how to deal with them when we do get them or care for them. And maybe we don't even place them in the right places. You know, it's one thing to have a fire alarm someplace in a house, and what if your house starts burning at the other end and it doesn't work or doesn't help you when you're in your bedroom sleeping? So this is what this program is all about, and the chief will highlight a little bit better than I for that. This is proclamation from the City of Victorville recognizing October 3rd through the 9th as Fire Prevention Week.
Well, obviously, I'd like to thank the council, Mayor Pro Tem Rothschild. We really appreciate you presenting this proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. This happens normally every year about this time of year in October. We pick a theme, and again, this year, we want to look at smoke detectors, and they really do save lives. So I just want to say, everybody here, tonight, you all have a homework assignment. When you go home, promise me you'll check your smoke detectors. It's really important. So I really thank the City of Victorville, the council, for your dedication to public safety. You've always been forefront with that, and we appreciate it. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Chief. And another program, it's a new one, but it's very special. It's kind of... Yvonne Hester here has come up with this one. And this is... Really puts a spotlight on the community instead of turning it around and patting ourselves on the back. The fact is that all of us up here, we only do what resources you give us, and it's you folks out there that do it. Well, this is a program that highlights the bright lights in the community. And once a month, we'd like to recognize the citizen in Victorville that's special and is dedicated, not just the last month, but a good part of their life to serving the community in Victorville. And this month, we have... Why am I... Oh, your name is at the end of the paragraph. Stephen, would you please come out, sir? I just chatted with him just a little while ago, and then all of a sudden, I was looking for his name to show how clever I was, how I can remember him. Dick Stephen. He served 20 years, 21 years in the Air Force and also worked with our Air Civil Guard as well. When I first came in here, I touched base with that organization just a little bit. So it needs really special attention and a lot of dedication, your part, and it consumes you up just like the Boy Scouts and a lot of other activities does. And Stephen, this is on behalf of the City of Victorville recognizing you as our bright light for the month of September. Thank you very much, sir.
I'd like to thank the city and the council for this award. Although I'll be accepting it for myself, I'm part of an organization that works within the city, and I had a number of people over the years that have worked with me. I didn't get here by myself. I'm in the process, hopefully, rebuilding the ECS portion of that house again so we can bring back more of the volunteers to help work. I'd like to thank everyone. It's good that any volunteers, doesn't matter what you work with, do get recognition over time. It's a good feedback for all the people out there in the community.
I just want to say just a couple of things, just to highlight what Dick does. I actually sent this nomination in because I'll tell you, when I first came to Victorville a couple of years ago, there was one constant that I always saw every single day, day in, day out. Got on my nerves a couple of times, I'll be honest. I'll just throw right... Got on my nerves a couple of times, but I'll tell you what. Without the dedication of guys like this in this community, the City of Victorville should be proud of Dick Stephen. He is actually responsible for disaster preparedness. He's a volunteer ECS coordinator for the City of Victorville. He is also in charge of working... He does a lot of work with the CERT program. And on top of that, volunteers with the state at the California Highway Patrol across the street. So he does a ton of stuff in this community. We just authorized him to drive some of our vehicles, so we took an extra leap of faith here. So he's going to... You'll see him driving around town. But he really does a lot of stuff in this city, and I just wanted to... As the fire chief wanted to get up here and just highlight the fact that this is the guy I see out there making it happen all the time. So I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. While Mike is coming up, I have a question for the fire chief. And who started the fire, the Great Chicago Fire in 1871?
Ooh, that's a good one.
Joe.
Folios Cow is said to have kicked over the lantern, the barn on fire that then burned the...
Okay.
That's right, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
It was not the most deadliest fire of that day.
That's right.
The same day, there was... Lives and fish digo were stunned. I don't know.
Hey, Joe, that's great. Thank you.
Good.
Remember. First on the agenda is our public comment portion. And I do... It's limited to three minutes, and I do have three cards. And I'll call Richard Urban.
Right, I appreciate the council's time here. I do have copies of the Water District bill here. Quite simply, what we have is a contract between Johann Martinez and in renting my house to him, he agreed to keep the water department's trash, the water bill, the sewer, all of that paid. He went to the Water District, signed up for it, and four many payments were made. And therefore, because the city agreed in accepting the payments and continued to supply service, it kind of null and voided, I feel, the part of your ruling that says that the property owner is required to pay for solid waste and storm drains. And so therefore, I was assessed approximately $229 onto my property tax, and I'd like to find out if the council would consider waiving that.
We can't respond. It's an item that was not on the agenda, but our water department, our district manager will get with you.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Bowman and Dana Armstrong, and they were both very cordial and told me that I needed to come here. So could I get some direction on who to go to next? Or leave it in your lap?
The water department will get back to you, sir.
Okay.
May contact with you. Read your write down. Thank you. Now, Rhonda in Hartville?
Counsel. Praise the Lord, counsel. Praise the Lord, counsel. Readings in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm new in the community. I've been here six months. I love the weather. But my concern is the children. What about the youth? What about the children? I've met homeless 12-year-olds, I've met 13-year-old homeless children who have nowhere to go, who's been in mental institution hospital for 51, 50. What about our children who's not attending school for whatever reason? But the Lord is not pleased, and it is time for some changes to go on. And it begins at the head, which is City Council. I was part of City Council in Pasadena, where I would like to introduce a proposal for youth centers in our community. And because it attracts homes here, I think one should be placed in every community. And also a shelter for homeless. There's only one with 18 beds. There's people losing their homes every day. There's people barely released from prison. Out of all the 16 grants that were distributed in the state of California, not one was ascribed here in Victorville, San Bernardino, where most of our at-risk youth, young adults, men or whatever, have been displaced up here with nothing, with nothing, with nothing. Gangs, I called the Explore Program, which is through the sheriff, police department. How are the kids going to get there? They have a background check, they have a C-level average grade they must keep. This stuff is not fair. It's not fair to our children. And bottom ground is we need to create programs that are designed to replant, rebuild, and restore, assuring a solid foundation of love. God is love. Without God, we could do nothing.
You have 30 seconds left, man.
Hope, respect for God, ourselves, our children, and others. I'll be back. God bless you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and City Council members. My name is Chuck Hansen. I live at 22113 Sioux Road. I'm here again to let you know about the bike ride Apple Valley is having October 23rd and to invite all of you to show up, ride. And I brought a few extra flyers that maybe you can post somewhere where people can know about it. And I was hoping Terry Caldwell would be here. I didn't know until last meeting that he initiated the River Walk. And I'd like to see it finished. And I'm telling my wife, I'd like to write it. She's taking me to Vegas to celebrate my 80th birthday, so I'd like to write it before I die. Get busy.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. You had a... Do you want for amateurs, like some of us here, not the 61 or 62 miles or 31, maybe five miles for us?
Three.
Three.
Our three.
We'll continue with the agenda. The first is the Southern California Logistics... Oh, wait a minute, I'm missing one here. Library Board of Trustees. And we have the consent calendar.
For approval?
Next is the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and also the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. The co-chair for that is Mayor Pro Tem Mike Rothschild. He'll chair those.
Mayor, the consent calendars are on the item on the rail authority.
Vote for approval.
Any additional items? Okay. Then into the Logistics Airport Authority, we have the consent calendar, two items.
Vote for approval.
And item number four is a request loan agreement between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the City of Victorville.
This is a companion item to the City Council, item number six. Can we take those together?
Absolutely.
We'll consider them together. Comments? Make a motion?
Vote for approval.
Is the city item number six. And then item number five is a request to approve the First Amendment easement for right-of-way Kinder Morgan Calvin Caleneva Pipeline. Vote for approval. And there's no revisions as well on that. That concludes the two items that I have. RDA? Here's it. Part of our RDA.
Oh, here it is. It's not a... The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. We don't have any revisions. We have a consent calendar. Vote for... Next, we have the Victorville Water District. We don't have any revisions. We have a consent calendar.
We set up the order participation agreement for Desert Plaza Project under the RDA agenda.
I don't think you've done the RDA agenda yet. There's some items on the RDA agenda.
That's mine. Our paperwork is out of line with the...
It's just two weeks in a row now. This is not matched up with the computer.
That's fine. So we're on the Water District, and we have the consent calendar. We have a motion to approve in a second. Item number four is a request to approve and ask for account for a portion of the 09-10 replacement water obligation, the amount of $602,820.06. Vote for approval.
Let me guess, what's next?
It appears that the RDA agenda is not on the voting panel. That's why it was overlooked.
But we just did number four.
I've done any of the RDA items.
That was the Water District.
That's the water.
Yeah, it was the water.
If the council could do voice votes on the redevelopment agency agenda, it isn't on the Granicus program.
And we'll do the RDA.
RDA number four.
Yeah, but we have the consent calendar. I'll move for approval.
Okay. Oh. I have... That's ridiculous.[1792.23] Oh.
So, we have a motion for the consent calendar for the RDA? For approval? Second.
Doing voice vote.
Yeah, if the council could just do a voice vote on these items, because it was left off the computer.
Aye.
Aye.
And next is item number four, which is discussion possible action regarding the VITA tax increment distribution, and Mr—or Mayor Pro Tem Mike Rothschild has requested that this be—
We'll put it off again, because this is an important item, all five council members should be here. Mr. Cabri Ellis wasn't here last week, and Mr. Caldwell's not here today, so we'll—I'm assuming everybody will finally make the next meeting, so we'll tee it up for the next one. It's not anything that's a timely issue, but it's something we ought to take a statement on.
Okay. Item number five is a written request to approve the Second Amendment to owner participation agreement by and among the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Civic Rogers Limited, Amroy, and Panda Express, Inc.
Hey, Cabri Ellis, this item, you have on the agenda a very slight change from the agenda package on the dais, you have a revised draft of the Second Amendment to the owner participation agreement. The only difference is, the draft that was in the agenda package was with Panda Express, is now with CFT, which is an affiliate of Panda Express, it's for the purposes of how the title, the terms and provisions of the OPA and staff report are all consistent with that. I have a change of party, which is an affiliate of Panda.
Item number five?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the city council agenda. Don't have any revisions, we have a consent calendar for approval. Item number four is a request to approve Resolution Number 10-077. This resolution is to approve the acceptance of $82,000 for the U-turn program for the city of Victorville. Item number five, request to approve Resolutions Number 10-079 and 10-080?
Councilmember Almond?
If we took action on number six, seven is—seven is a request to award a one-year contract extension on the annual supply agreement to Robertson's in the amount of $75,000.
May I ask a question on number six, on the RDA? Is this for the—I'm sorry, I missed it on the RDA, because I was confused. This is for the bond? Am I right? Item number six?
This is to formalize the loan agreement, and the reason that we take this action, when I started to work here, I indicated to the city council, I was going to go back through all the documents, all the loan documents, all the contracts. Because of discussions that had been held in regard to expenditure funds and how it had been expended, when I looked, I came across this, met with Mr. Metzler, who indicated that it was a short-term loan, if you go back, this is why you have the memorandums submitted November 15, 2005, and the staff report that's also dated 2005. It all refers to a short-term loan, they describe it, except that loan was never consummated, and it's no longer the short term, and so, in order to make sure that we're in compliance, when we find items that aren't in exact compliance, or there had not been a follow-through, then I immediately bring those to the city council, and so this is to provide that this is a formalized loan on the expenditures of those funds. And it's—my intent is to do a disposition of the property, it is clear that now's a terrible time to sell property, because we're at the bottom of the market. It was purchased with the intent of constructing a library, the city is not financially able to even consider constructing a library now, or in the near future, and so it's the intent to go ahead and formalize this, and carry through what apparently was a council's desire in 2005, formalize the loan, to show the intent of the council at the time that they took the action in 2005, and then hopefully make a disposition of the property so that that loan can formally be repaid, as quickly as possible.
My knowledge, this was never brought forward to the city council at all. But I have—I've read through every one of them, and the SCLA 5-11, it said that this was a bond. It was a VITA bond, and we were taking a loan from VITA, and it should be paid back, the city was to pay back the the bond to VITA as soon as possible. This is a bond or a loan?
This was a part of a bond proceeds, it was part of the 2005 SCLA bond fund. And I did not go back and check the minutes, I just assumed because of the memorandums and the dates, and the fact that they were addressed to the council, that that in fact was on the agenda at that time, because if you will look on the memorandum from Keith Metzler regarding SCLA 511 resolution, it has the same initials, the finance approvals, everything in there, and I didn't formally check the minutes of the council, but I assumed that it had been in fact submitted to the council. But assuming that it was, still, formal documents need to be approved to make sure that we correct anything that we see that needs to be correcting, and this certainly needs to be formalized as a loan, and then the next step is for me to make a disposition of the property as soon as possible, in a very reasonable way, to make sure that the council and the city is protected, the fiduciary responsibility to ensure that this is all taken care of and the money's paid back as soon as possible, considering the current economics.
And that loan, that the agreement that's brought up? Promissory note?
Yes.
So, this is what we're approving tonight? This promissory note, Jim? I'm Mr. Cox.
Yes, that's—yes, it's the loan agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the city of Victorville is the actual document to be approved tonight, and both on the council agenda, and the—I guess it was on the RDA agenda, I—yeah, council took the action on both, but—
Yeah, and I missed—I skipped it. Okay, so this this bond money, this was all the bond, the total of the bond, I'm sorry.
No, the bond—the bond issue was much larger, I don't have the total amount at this time, but the portion that purchased the property for the library was a million nine, as I recall, yeah, a million nine hundred and three thousand dollars.
So, there was some other money?
There was additional funds, yes.
There was bond money. Emma, where do we do—where's the other bond?
Well, the only thing I was—I'll add to that, is I think the loan's important, because we need to clean up what should have been done in the past, but I would ask staff to please do two things. One, confirm with this council at some point in the immediate future that you're not going to find any more of these, and—and two, also address the question of the bond funding and what it can be used for. I think it's good that we put into place the loan agreement so that SCLA can be paid back for bond bond proceeds that it issued debt on. So, for that reason, that's why I'm supportive of the of the agreement, but what I think needs to be clarified is that those bond documents call out intended uses for the bond proceeds, which are supposed to give bondholders somewhat of a level of confidence in that the fact that they'll be paid back. However, I don't believe that there's any intention to tie the city, or SCLA, or VITA to a specific project. If there is another project that makes sense, I'm not saying that the library purchase of land made sense, but it is what it is, it was done, we need to pay back SCLA and pay back the bondholders with respect to this transaction. I just want to, number one, make sure that there's no further ones out there, and number two, to have clarification to the council and the board of SCLA, that what bonds are issued for and what their intent is, can that vary, and how can it vary? Because it's my understanding that what those bond documents say, there is some latitude with that, and I'd like to get a report for the councils, well as for the public, as far as what bond funds can be used for, because it's very confusing if we say it can be only used for this project, and we're spending it on another project. We need to clarify that for us and for the public.
Hi, Mike, Councilmember McAckern, just very quickly with respect to this issue, these are airport authority bonds, they are tied to tax increment revenues, and as occurs in pretty much every bond issue, supported by tax increment revenues, try to expand them for redevelopment purposes consistently. That will be in the bond documents, so you're correct, you do identify projects that you intend to use them on, but you do have flexibility for redevelopment purposes, document done with with tax increment revenues.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Back to item seven? Item eight, is a request to award a one-year contract extension on the annual supply agreement to Vulcan Materials in the amount of $65,000.
Approval?
Councilmember Almond?
Next is the presentation of report from council members. Pro Tem?
I have none.
Nothing.
I have none. Do we have any items that the council may wish to place on the upcoming city council meetings? Thank you very much.